All right. Okay, it is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And this is the regular city council meeting for Minatrista for October 1st. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. Thank you for joining us. And if you would also join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just a friendly reminder, if you have any electronic devices with you, please put them on airplane, airplane mode or turn them off so they don't disrupt our proceedings. So with that, again, welcome. And I'm gonna start with a few introductions. I'm Lisa Wayland, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, Mike Malater, John Trumperland, Shannon Bruce, and then on our end, our new engineer, Allison Fousky. Okay, thank you. I'll get it sooner or later. And then we have our city clerk with us, Chris Lindquist, and our director of administration, Cassandra Tabor. And then to my right, absent this evening is our regular, our city administrator, Mike Peroni. But sitting in for him is our finance director, Brian Grimm. Next to him is our public works director, Gary Peterson. And then community development director, David Abel. And then with us also this evening, our attorney, Ron Beatty, with Kennedy and Graven. And then on the end, last but not least, we have our chief of police, Paul Falls. So thank you all for being here. And first order is, is there any additions or changes to the agenda? Otherwise, if there are none, then is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Mr. Trumperland made that second. And then all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. We don't have any special presentations this evening. And I don't see any persons signed up to be heard. So we will move on to our consent agenda items. There are four this evening. Anybody wanna remove any of them? Otherwise, they consist of approve our work session meeting minutes from September 17th, 2018. B is approve our regular meeting minutes from September 17th, 2018. C is approve our claims. And D is accept the St. Boniface proposed fire service pension increase for 2019. Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and D?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Mortenson made that motion, and Mr. Malater seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings. We do have one this evening. It's a temporary, one-day on-sale liquor license for the mound West Tonka Rotary. I believe this is for the West Tonka Beer Fest?
Brew Fest.
Brew Fest. Well, okay, there's beer there, so.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's an annual event. The West Tonka Rotary Club, it applied for a one-day intoxicating liquor. The event will be held at the Gales Woods Farm from 3:00 to 6:00 on November 3rd. The background check has been done by the police department, and they have passed their background check. This is a public hearing, so you'll have to open it. They also, I forgot my notes, so I'm sorry.
That's okay. They have some conditions?
They do have some conditions, but they're outlined in your packet. One thing is normally, since we are a sponsor of this event, we have in the past waived the $40 application fee. Staff is also recommending we do that again this year. Like I said, they passed their background check, and so the only thing that we need to do is do the public hearing.
All right. So what I'll do, any questions of staff? Otherwise, I'm going to open the public hearing. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing with my gavel. So the public hearing is now open. If there's anybody here that wishes to speak for or against the one-day liquor license for the West Tonka Rotary, may do so at this time. I don't believe we have anybody here for that item, so I'm going to close the public hearing and move it to council. What is your wish? We're looking for a motion. It's, yep, on the bottom of page 20, thank you. Approve a temporary one-day intoxicating liquor license for the annual Tonka Brew Fest on Saturday, November 3rd at Gale Woods, with staff recommendation of waiving the application fee of $40.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Tie, right. Tie goes to Ms. Bruce. So Mr. Malater made that motion, and Ms. Bruce seconded that. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. So next, we'll move on to our business items. Our first business item is to approve a quote to repair the driveways at 7515 and 7700 Halsted Drive. Mr. And Ms. Okay? Fousky, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. This evening before you is quote to do some work at two properties along the Halsted Drive project corridor. The impetus of providing a quote to do this work instead of including it in the construction contract is to keep the project moving along and get some residents with their driveway and start trying to thread this back together. The quotes that were provided, in speaking to engineer Hornby, the work that's proposed to be done under these quotes was not, the quantities weren't included in the original contract because the easements were still under negotiations. But I did, just as a matter of practice, to take a look at what the contractor had for bid prices for this type of work. And the quotes actually are running under what would have been done under the bid contract. So presenting this to you for your consideration this evening so that the contractor, JBT, would be able to move forward with restoring these two driveways. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
When would JBT be able to do the work, or when would they be scheduled to do the work?
That's an excellent question. Madam Mayor, I apologize, I don't have that at my disposal.
I can answer it for you. I just talked to them today on another project. They're also the ones that are doing the trail at Slow Creek. And due to the wet weather, they are behind. They were scheduled to do our trail here the first part of this week, and they have moved it to the later part of this week. So I'm assuming once they get the okay here, that they'll get it on for hopefully next week or, you know, soon, another week after that.
Okay, I just don't want this to be delayed, like the rest of the Halsted project has been, so. Okay.
So these two were originally part of the construction? This would have been part of the normal construction contract?
My understanding is that it would, the quantities for these two, for these two driveways is not included in the original bid.
Was not.
Because they hadn't solidified the temporary easements to go past the right-of-way.
So we would have to do this anyway?
It would have been a change order to bring in the driveway work.
And probably more costly had the contractor done it, and probably not.
A little later.
And a little later. Any other questions?
Do we have any idea as to, so we've got two properties in the fight here. How many more of these are we gonna see?
This is it, I think.
These are the final two. Everything else has been completed as far as painting driveways and stuff, so.
All right, thank you.
The overall project, I think, is getting pretty close.
It is close. The overall project is close to being completed.
We'll talk about that maybe under staff reports. So good, but good questions. So what is your pleasure, council? We do need to get these driveways completed. They were part, they're part of the project, if you will.
I'll make motion to reserve. Resolves number 132-18, approve quote to repair the driveways at 7515 and 7700 Halsted Drive, CP01-16.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any further questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. So now we'll move on to our second business item, and that's approving a conditional use permit for Buddy Boy Barbecue Restaurant at 8175 State Highway 7. Mr. Abel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. It's kind of an exciting land use application, something new to the city of Minatrista. We want, certainly wanna spend a little time highlighting for the council. So the applicants, Jennifer and Joseph Cox, are representing Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue. They're proposing to open that restaurant at 8175 State Highway 7. As the council probably is aware, there is an existing building on the property that was built sometime around 1968 for the use of a restaurant. Some may know, may more commonly remember it as The Norseman. In recent, more recent memory, it was also known as Timosli's Pizza. So the applicants are now requesting to use the building to operate the barbecue restaurant, as I said, Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue. Upon review of the application, we did not find a conditional use permit on file for the property as a restaurant. And since there has been a period longer than one year in which the property was not actively used as a restaurant, it can no longer be considered not conforming use, hence the reason for the new conditional use permit that's before you this evening and why it is being requested. It is required per city code in the C-2 Highway Commercial District. So it is a requirement of city code. And as you'll see from the staff report, we've laid out via our CUP criteria how this application would affect those factors as outlined in city code. Find them, found the use to be compliant with those factors and have listed findings of fact in the resolution. Also, a list of conditions if you were to approve the conditional use permit application this evening. The planning commission did review this application at their meeting last week. They did hold a public hearing and did make a recommendation unanimously to go, to recommend approval of the application. So with that, I'll turn it to council for questions. Applicants are with us this evening. You have any questions for them? And we do have a resolution in your packet which would approve the conditional use permit, as I said, with findings and conditions.
Right. So yeah, this is a nice addition to our community, a restaurant. I know people down in the Hunter's Crest area, especially in Turtle Creek area, they have kinda questioned why we can't get more commercial here in our city. So this would be a nice addition here. The food is fabulous, too, so we'll have to check it out. But any questions of staff?
When are you looking at opening?
We'd like to open if possible. We need you to act with us, do you, you know, lining everything up?
I think we should ask them to bring food and.
To try out, testing.
I think I suggested it, the planning commission.
Personally, I'm really excited. This is something that we hear a lot, is that there's a lack of different types of restaurants. And I like the fact that you're doing the catering, too. I think that's a nice option, and I think it'll look great.
Full service, so, okay.
I did have a question. So you're planning just a lunchtime schedule? Is that correct?
Yeah, actually, we would like.
You can come to the, come to the microphone, I'm sorry, Ms. Cox.
Hello, we're Mr. Cox, representing Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue. And yes, we would like to primarily have a set schedule to meet the requirements for eventually being five days a week. And it would just be lunchtime. But we'd also like to host occasional evening events, like seasonal harvest dinners. Sometimes a single option, sometimes three course, and sometimes seven course intimate. So we will, we'd like to have more going. But for, as far as set structure, you'll find a set structure.
For the lunchtime, yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think it'd be great to have evening hours, too. But I understand, I understand you gotta get started, so. But I think that'd be a great addition for the evening. If someday that works out.
Yeah, I'm sure it will, because we also understand that our community longs not just to have something in the evening, but they don't wanna be bored with anything. So it's our hearts desire to become, well, just to be the culinary artists that we are and to give a little bit of spice, a little something different.
Sure.
That's why we don't want a structured evening. It's because we wanna keep it fun, fluid.
Okay, great. All right. So with that, is there a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the Buddy Boy Barbecue Restaurant at 8175 Highway 7 with the findings of fact outlined in the report, along with staff's recommendations?
I had one more question.
Okay, let's make the motion first, then you ask the question.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson, and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Mr. Malater, another question?
So this is for David. If they were to decide to expand their hours, I don't think we have any restrictions on that, so they'd just be able to do that.
Correct, yeah, we specifically set up the resolution and conditions so there was flexibility. We wanted as much flexibility as possible for them, you know, in thinking through the conditions.
Sure, okay, great.
Good, good question. Any other questions? And hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So welcome, and good luck. All right. So next on our agenda, we have approved the quote for the purchase and installation of trees at Lyle Park. This is Mr. Peters?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. Every year, the city, we try to look at city parks and try to fill in, bury areas, replace dead dying trees. Most of it is to kinda stay ahead of the arrival of the Emerald Ashel Borer, which the memory is coming, it is now in Wright County, unfortunately. In 2016, the city council approved some tree replacements for the Boulevard area along Hunter's Trail. It was postponed due to the new parking lot that was being installed. So we did not replace them, we did remove the dead ones to kinda make it look a little more presentable. The contractors late getting the seed planted at that time. The decision was made to delay that until the turf was established. This spring, we did the interior trees around the parking lot. We held off on the maples. I look at the trees up there, and I kinda, when we get these bids to go and check them out. And they were park grade, they were not grade A trees. So we decided to hold off on them till we get a better crop of trees. So that's why they did not get planted earlier this year. So we went out for bid again this year to get tree pricing for that. We're also adding in the park, we're also adding in three trees along the Boulevard on Glacier Road. And David can kinda fill in what those are for.
Sure, yeah, Madam Mayor and council. So we were contacted by a resident who was trying to figure out how to get their Boulevard trees that were essentially never planted as part of the sixth addition. And this is one of those properties that got caught up basically through the foreclosure between the bank and previous developer with the Hunter's Crest neighborhood. So they've tried a couple different avenues of trying to figure out how to get basically three trees that have never been planted there. I knew Gary was working on getting, getting a quote. So I mentioned that if possible, we could see if we could get a quote out of the other trees, and if the council was okay with that, we'd add that as part of the planting. And they understand that they would be needing to take care of them. The, you know, there's a warranty, of course, that comes with the trees. But anything beyond that, it's on the owners to replace.
What is it, a two-year warranty?
One year.
Just one year?
Yep.
Darn it, okay. All right. And this is coming out of our Tree Preservation or Environmental Enhancement Fund?
Correct, yeah. Basically, just a delayed expense. Like, as Gary said, we had planned to do this in 2016 and just for the reasons I stated haven't gotten around to it.
Okay, so it would be a nice addition.
Yes.
All right.
And so we got our three bids in from surrounding companies. So, and I've never in my life have seen a difference of a dollar. It's unbelievable they come that close. I mean, it's, I never see them that close. I mean, $10, $100, maybe, but never in dollars, so. But what I'm asking tonight is the staff recommended awarding the quote with Midwest Landscapes for the purchase and installation of the 22 trees at Lyle Park and the surrounding area for the total quote of $8,079.
So Gary, given that the quotes are the same, is there any other non-fiscal factors we should take into consideration between these two that would?
We've used Midwest Landscapes in the few, in the past. LandiCon is a very big contractor around the area, too, as well as Superior. So, I mean, between the two, I would not have a problem with either one of them. I mean, right now, I know LandiCon is very busy in the Woodland Cove area. They're doing all the installation of all the new trees for the new phase in there, so I don't know what their schedule is like. Both of them have told me they can get this yet again in the fall, so. It's kinda, we're kinda at a time crunch now, and it's getting to be the time to plant them, so. And, you know, I'm fine with either one, either company, so, I mean.
And we've done business with Midwest before.
We have, yes, and we've worked with them in the past. And I've worked with, they've worked with the city of Eden Prairie when I was there. So they, they're, they've both been around for quite a long time, so. Either one is a great company, so. And out of the trees, the three hackberries would be the ones that would be planted up on, along the Boulevard on Glacier, the rest would go out through the park.
Okay. All right, any questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made the motion to approve Midwest Landscapes at, for how many trees? 22 trees?
22.
Okay, thank you. The amount of $8,079, and Ms. Mortenson seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion granted. So now we have approve and extended professional service agreement for Lotus Drive improvements as part of the Woodland Cove Third Edition. Did I miss street sweeping? I did. Yep, okay, we weren't gonna do it this fall, right? No, just kidding.
Madam Mayor and council, this is for street sweeping services. Back in the spring of 2016, ReliCorps Services was awarded a sweeping contract for the 2016, 2017 basis, for the season, for twice-a-year sweeping with a performance-based contract for an extension to 2018 at the same price, prices, which is very reasonable at the time. It was at no rate increase. They did provide great services for the first two years of the contract, but starting this year, 2018, with the late spring, they kept pushing us off and pushing us off, and I was getting more and more complaints from different areas to try to get it done. After a month and a half of excuses, we have in our contract that we can void the contract, which we did. We contacted the company that was second at the time, and they were able to pick it up. They actually came in within two days, and within a week had everything swept for us. I mean, they dropped everything to come and help us out. They had done it in the past also, so. With that said, I, we went out for a bid and requested new quotes from five more different companies again for the fall of 2018 this year, as well as spring and fall for 2019 and 2020. Four of them responded back, which were listed here on the contract. Carefree Services was the lowest by just a few, by $1,081. But as, you know, I mean, they're all reputable companies. Are, were recommending a motion to adapt the resolution number 135-18 to award a sweeping contract with Carefree Services for the total quoted price of $28,800 for the fall and of 2018, along with the spring and fall of 2019. And then for the quoted services, $21,700 for the spring and fall of 2020 services. These would be paid out of both the 50% of the stormwater fee and then 50% out of the street maintenance fee.
Okay.
And there is a con, and there is a void in these contracts all the time. If the services are not as presented, they will, can void the contract.
Same as the last one.
Same as the last one.
Yeah, maybe we don't wait a month or so, next time.
Exactly.
Okay.
When is payment made? Is it after the?
After the sweeping is completed.
So they get twice-a-year?
Twice-a-year payments, correct. And there is a clause in there, there are two, there are two private city streets, Litherum Way and Eagle Bluff, that have the separate contract with the city. They pay a set fee at that same, they measure how much road they have, and it's paid based on that per-mile cost. They pay the city, and then we have them sweep that. But that is a whole separate contract with them, so.
And Gary, who was the vendor that stepped in for the spring?
Carefree Services, actually. We're the ones that had the contract and were beat out by ReliCorps in the following couple of years, so. And they, they were second place, and, you know, they stepped right up to the plate. They are on a maple plains, so they're very close, too, which shows a lot.
Oh, yeah, local, nice. Okay, so I know we had some issues, right, Mr. Malater?
Yes, I'm glad to see that we are having a different vendor. Hopefully, they actually get it swept up.
Yeah. All right, so any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to adopt resolution 135-18 to award the street sweeping contract with Carefree Services for fall of 2018 and spring of 2019, and fall of 2019, and then also spring of '20?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made, and made by Mr. Trumperland, and seconded by Mr. Malater. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. So now we'll move on to the extended professional services agreement for Lotus Drive. And that is?
Ms. Fousky.
Ms., okay, sorry, I keep looking that direction.
I'm the new person. Madam Mayor, members of the council, before you, for consideration is a proposal from FOTH Infrastructure and Environment for some additional services. And to provide some background, the Woodland Cove development included some improvements to Lotus Drive, including a construction of Met Council's interceptor, St. Boniface Interceptor, from the east side of the development to Cassaf 44, County State Highway 44. As I mentioned previously, FOTH Infrastructure and Environment provided these design services. So the, the services are billed through the city. However, the developer then reimburses the city the cost for these services since they are development-related, there's a development relation there. Construction of this interception, pardon me, interceptor has taken longer to complete than expected. Therefore, FOTH anticipates some additional full-time construction observation for both August, September, and some part-time work here in October. The additional services amount to $56,000. This amount was communicated to the developer, who is agreeable to the additional costs, thinks that this is a reasonable additional amount for the inspection. Therefore, staff is recommending that council approve this additional cost, knowing that the developer will be reimbursing the city for these additional funds.
I guess just one other point from my understanding is that they're going to be making a deposit sometime very soon, like.
I was just gonna ask that, thank you.
That's what they did on the original amount upfront, was they made the, you know, the deposit per the agreement.
Yeah. I would hope that they would make a deposit, and then, yes. Because, and then we bill them and deduct it from the deposit.
Yeah, we're pretty much, they make the deposit here, and then we end up paying full, and that's, it's been notated on the claims register, this is, you know, 100% paid for through that developer deposit, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, thank you. And is some of that covered by Met Council, or is that all covered by?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and council, there, it, there is a formula. It depends upon the work involved, but there is probably a portion of it that they will be paying for.
Okay. And then the Met Council and the Woodland Cove developer, they can work that out?
Yes.
They work that out, okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right, good, no cost to the city.
I guess one thing I've noted on one of the future claims, you'll see some dollars after the actual contract coming through pretty soon, that you'll see a big outlay that we will have gotten paid through, through Met Council, to us first, and then have to pass along based on contract, so that'll be notated.
Okay, so when we see it on claims and it's a big number, we know that we, we got the revenues and, okay, it's a pass-through. All right, all right, all right. Is there a motion then, or any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion then to approve the extended professional service agreement for Lotus Drive improvements as part of the Woodland Cove Third Edition?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Mortenson made the motion, and Ms. Bruce seconded that. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. So next, our last business item, I believe that's the last, yep. It's accept the quote and authorize payment for reinstallation of paver driveway at 3850 Enchanted Lane. This is the Grott driveway. If you guys, if you remember, they came to the council about a month ago asking us to make sure that their driveway gets done because it's been undone for like over a year, so. And this is part of the Enchanted Lane project, so, Ms. Fousky? Or Gary, I'm sorry.
It's a joint effort here.
I'll get it right sooner or later.
This is a joint effort. The city acquired temporary easement for that property at 3850 Enchanted Lane to reconstruct the roadway. These was due to the topography of the property, alignment in the wide end of the road. They had to alter the, for the raising of the profile, meant the removal and installation of their paver driveway. It's quite substantial paver driveway. The property owners have just recently asked the city staff if they could have their contractor quote the reinstallation of the paver driveway. We gave them permission to go ahead and proceed to receive a quote from GLM Landscapes, which quoted at $20,915 to replace the pavers. The city cost estimate for contractor to do it would have been about 28, a little over $28,000. That includes the 2018 price increase.
That includes the two thousand eighteen price increase, that would, that part is picked up by the Met Council, but the quote includes the removal of, so the salvation of the remaining pavers, the installation of the minor grade of the base, the reinstallation of all the pavers, so. With the, with the cheaper quote being from their own contractor and making a resident happy to get it done before the season ends, staff has recommended the council approve of Resolution Number one thirty-seven dash eighteen, accepting the quote and authorization expenditure of funds for Tuxedo Road and Enchanted Lane acquisition commitments for the property at thirty-eight fifty Enchanted Lane for Project CP zero four dash sixteen.
Maybe just a couple of clarifications on, on this one. This one actually was included in the contractor, contract with Valley, and now it's being pulled out and done through this quote, so I, I'm speaking with Ms. Fosky earlier today, it sounds like we have the ability to do that, because one of the questions I had was if we need to do a change order deduct or something, maybe, I don't know, you even want to just explain that, it's, yeah.
So with a contract such as this, since it's a unit cost, unit price contract, so the contractor provided a price per square foot or square yard for this type of work, and in this instance, when paying the contractor, there's measurements made in field, and so in this instance, since the driveway was not done by this contractor, we therefore would not have a measurement to make payment to the contractor for this work, and it simply wouldn't be a pay item. It didn't significantly change the scope of the contract, so it's a very small amount of the overall contract, and that's why we're able to go and change the quantity with the contractor and not have this valley paving, pardon me, do this work and get it done separately. That's why you're not seeing this as a change order, as a deduct.
Yeah, right.
Because we're just wanting valley paving to actually do the...
The paving, we want them to do the paving and get it done and concentrate on that. Do you have any idea when they would be doing this work then?
Um, I'm assuming once we get everything signed and out to them, they can probably get it on their schedule. Again, weather dependent, I'm sure, so...
Yeah, okay, all right. So I'm sure the Grats will be happy about that, so. All right.
One other question on this. I see the quote has a note on it, says that no irrigation repairs or modifications have been included in this proposal. I'm not sure if that's standard language or if there is irrigation and we'll have to address that separately.
Uh, there's no irrigation that I know of there. It's, I mean, and probably would not affect any, I mean, they're talking just the driveway itself, it's not, they're not going out. The driveway's already been there in place, so I mean, they're just, I can raise it up a little more base, so they shouldn't be doing any work outside the scope of the driveway. It's probably just their nobility sure they put in.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, if you're in favor then, then, or not, looking for a motion to accept the quote and authorize a payment for the reinstallation of paver driveway at thirty-eight fifty Enchanted Lane.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Chumperlin. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. On our staff, it says no reports, but just real quick, Gary, Halsted you said is almost done, I did drive out there today. Some of the driveway acts approaches, if, so the, if it's bituminous to bituminous, it looks good, but if it's bituminous to gravel, there's a pretty significant dip on those driveways, are those going to be regraded and brought up?
Yes, Madam Mayor, they have, they have their graveling left to do on there and they have some continued grading on the sides of the roads and driveways.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, okay.
Correct, and they're, just do, I think, do, they just finished paving on, late on Thursday.
Okay.
So I'm assuming with the weather, they got behind again, but yes, they do have some grading to do. We had a meeting on, I believe it was Thursday afternoon to discuss between Mr. Hornby, Ms. Fosky, Mad Havelik, the inspector out there, the chief inspector, Garrett, the main inspector, myself, what was left for work out there. Very minimal work is left to do out there on their part, just some minor grading here and there.
Okay, because some of the areas, especially on Farm Hill, you know, the, the, there need to, there needs to be more dirt. You probably noticed that, there's maybe a two or three foot inch drop between, and I'm just afraid that that...
Some of those areas are going to be left that way for the buildup, so the water can continue to run off that way in the areas where it is maintainable turf, i.e. yards as such, if people maintain them all, they will be getting dirt up to there and stuff, but most areas will be allowed, so, because over time that'll start to build up, so we keep the water off the road. But Halsted Road is, or not Halsted, I'm sorry, Farm Hill is scheduled to have a complete black dirt and seed all the way through the entire project, as well as any maintained areas of Halsted.
All right. And then just one other question, there's a big, huge pile of dirt.
From my understanding, that is now their, that property owner's responsibility, from what I understand.
Oh, that, that looks awful. Okay.
That's what I was told, so, you know, as far, yeah, I, it, there are, they do have some garbage to clean up out there, and there's some seaming left to do and stuff, and, but, you know, for, as far as substantial work, it is done and...
Okay, thank goodness. All right, all right, thank you.
Maybe while we're talking roads, I think the latest update we've gotten on the Enchanted Project is that valley paving should be starting the eighth, which I guess is next week, and they're still under the contract to have it done by October thirty-first, so they gotta, they gotta move once they get out there, so, or get going or so, but...
All right, I know there's been a lot of rain, I suppose that's somewhat of the delay, but, all right. All right, well, keep us posted, so. And just one real quick, another question, Mr. Abel, do we know, how is the Red Oak developer, Lennar, doing with their temporary COs? Are they moving along, getting them finished?
Again, Madam Mayor and Council, as we were talking about with weather, the weather's been the biggest factor for them, they are out there, you know, getting final rates set, waiting to get sod down.
Okay.
We have not released the checks yet until the sod is down, so once we get indication that it is down, we'll release them, but they're, the biggest factor again is...
Is the rain. So maybe, maybe, I know where they're saying that they should have all of the expired temporary COs done by mid-October, so we're just a few weeks away from that, so maybe send a nice reminder to the builder, okay?
Yeah, yeah, we certainly can do that, but again, you know, if it's raining, there's not much they can do.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other staff reports? If not, council reports. You know, I have, I have none.
I have WCC on October eleventh, and they're actually having a speaker from Special Olympics.
Nice, yeah. Smaller.
I have nothing on the home city, I was out of town for the last meeting. I do have a request to cover this, maybe in a future work session or council meeting, an update from Three Rivers as to what their plan is for the land that they have purchased for the future corridor.
Okay.
Specifically, what I'm concerned about is not the trail itself, obviously voters in favor of the trail, but they have purchased some rather large tract supply land, of which they are going to use, just allegedly a small fraction of that land to put the trail in. And I am, I know that they have design plans somewhat sketched already, so I'd like to know their plan for dividing out what they need and then selling out the rest.
I'm sure they will, but we could have, could you just check in with Three Rivers and maybe they could do a special presentation at a, at a work session?
And if you, are you referring to the one down?
Yeah.
The large, you know, because I don't think that the sale is actually official on that one yet, I'll, I can certainly check.
We're curious to see what they plan on doing.
Yeah, I, I don't know, again, I don't think that the sale is official yet, so I don't, I can certainly check with them, I suspect they haven't probably gotten much further on their plan yet, again, because it's not an official sale yet, but I'll, I'll check on that. You would, you'll likely to also be seeing a request, they're looking at a piece of property up along Little Long Lake, which went to our planning commission last week, it will go to our Parks Commission here next week, and then that will be brought to you on the fifteenth, so I can touch base with their staff to see if someone's available to come, and then possibly give an update if they have any more information on that other piece that you're referring to.
Yeah, I think actually that Little Long Lake even drives more the discussion. I just want to make sure it's on their radar, that, that we would like, at least I know I would like to see what their plan is to get that remaining land back on the tax rolls so that we can...
Sure.
And I think there was also, if I remember right, they purchased two pieces of property last year for their potential water treatment site and trail.
That was a W, M C W D, M Three Rivers joint, yeah.
They were involved.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if there was a, I thought I had, I'm not sure, but I thought there was a plan to possibly take some of that land and put it back in private ownership? No.
They sold, they sold half of it to M C W D.
That's, that was a partnership.
So M C W D owns a portion of it and Three Rivers owns a portion of it.
Okay, so they're, okay, so it's just a large parcel they bought, potential that they might buy.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, good. And then do we, I know you mentioned the, so separate topic, so you mentioned the Red Oak temporary certificates of occupancy, do we need to have a discussion at some future point about policy and potential changes to policy on various aspects of that? Full process?
We can do that. It, he's talking about the temporary, temporary CO deposits and how we can work that to incentivize developers to get those completed, so, but we probably, we don't have very many work sessions left this year, so it would probably have to roll into next year. But keep it, we can just ask staff to put it on your radar screen, most likely, I mean, temporary COs are going to probably be issued in the winter time, but we just don't have enough time on our work session schedule for the remainder of the years.
And I'm, I say it somewhat hesitantly because I, I don't want to make policy based on one bad apple, but on the flip side, I don't want to see us get in the same situation that we got, and if there's changes, we can put in place so that doesn't happen again, we might want to consider that.
Sure.
So as a policy item, it certainly can be done, not urgently.
We'll put it on the to-do list, okay? Okay. Mr. Chumperlin?
I will be attending the Parks Commission on the ninth.
Okay.
And I attended the planning commission meeting, and I share Mr. Malator's concerns about the Three Rivers purchasing parcels and having that, bringing them off the tax rolls, and this parcel that they're looking at, at the planning commission this last week is off Retreat Drive, and it's a pretty large valuable parcel that I think the total property tax bill for that property was like sixteen thousand dollars, and part of that money goes to the county, part goes to the school district, part goes to the city of Benetrista, so, and it's a, it's a ten, it's more than a ten acre parcel that really can't be developed anyway, so I, I think, I think, I'm interested to see what the Park Commission thinks about that, but I share your concern about that, so.